Good evening. Tonight is Tuesday, April 22nd. May I please get a motion to come back? Motion by Rory, seconded by John. All those in favor? Six-zero. Great. So, welcome. We're so excited tonight to have some of our Sustainability Committee members, our students and our teachers here. And thank you so much for the Sustainability Fair. I'm sure we'll talk about it during Board announcements. But before we get started, if we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Have a great.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we are looking forward to a presentation on our, an update on our sustainability work in the district tonight. Before that, we have some Board announcements. I just wanted to, I don't want to speak before my colleagues, but I just wanted to recognize all of the effort that our faculty and staff and students put forth to create the Sustainability Fair tonight. It was our fourth year doing it, and it has grown every year. And we moved into even a bigger space this year. And it was just alive with engagement and joy and interest. And it was really like, I felt so proud tonight just being on the campus. Like, every field had athletic events. The boys were playing tennis. There was lacrosse going on. There were kids jumping rope outside. It felt so like, I know it's been spring since March, but today it really felt like spring and alive. And it was wonderful. And the work that you're doing and inspiring our students to be able to take their own passions and put them into projects that are really interesting and engaging. Some of the research that our seniors and juniors are doing as part of science research, it's really amazing. So, thank you very much. It was truly a pleasure to be there tonight and looking forward to hearing the report. I don't know if any other one else? Any other Board announcements?
Sure, I'll just, if you want to go ahead, Marjorie. Please.
Thank you, Roy. I thought you said that beautifully, and I echo your kind words. And the synergy across departments, too, thinking about connections, just for example, and because tonight we also have students going off to Florida to compete at the national level in DECA. But, you know, the synergy between marketing and Earthrise and other interdisciplinary connections that are being made, it's just really fulfilling and rewarding. And the student involvement in this work started on a small scale and now has really, I'm sorry for the pun, but taken root. And to see such vibrant involvement at every level of the district is just so rewarding and such a testament to the commitment and leadership of so many people in this room. And so, thank you and go KLSD. Congratulations and looking forward to the presentation.
Oh, well, at the risk of sounding like a broken record, but I do think it's important. So, I took over the role of Chair of the Sustainability Committee from Marjorie, who led it before I did. And before that, there were people like Mark Theo King and Steve Weis-Muller and many other people, and Janet Harkman and many other people, who really became sort of the foundation of the sustainability work at KLSD many, many years ago, before it was popular to think about sustainability. So, credit to them. But credit to Mary Ford, to you, Julia, to Melissa, to the whole staff here. I mean, it's just so wonderful to see how engaged Jim Panzer, how engaged all these guys are and how passionate they are, and how now that passion is really converting to the student body. And we had talked about it a few years ago, like, we really need to capture the mindsets of the students. And it's happened. It's happening and it's happening. And it's getting bigger and bigger and bigger every year. And with leadership of people like Austin, Luke, I don't see there, Noni Whelan coming up in the ranks. And we really just have such a wonderful set of student leaders who are driving this now. And it's almost like their good work is overtaking what we thought was our good work around the campus. And, you know, it's expanding into the entire community. And it's just so exciting. And I hope, even though I'm departing the Board, I hope that I can stay on the Sustainability Committee if that works out. And so, I'm really just so excited. I can't but echo what you guys are saying, but I really have such passion around this stuff. And the kids today were super. One exhibit was better than the next. I just think it's phenomenal. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you. And the only other thing I just want to, it's in the, I guess I could do it during the consent agenda, but we are meeting on Tuesday night because tonight is the night that all New York State public schools approve their BOCES, the Continuing Education Services Budgets. So, we meet on Tuesdays instead of Thursdays. And we are really grateful to BOCES and we work in partnership with them around lots of different things throughout the district. We have students who utilize their services. And we just are really proud to have a great, Northern Westchester BOCES is a really great example in the state of how BOCES can function and collaborate. So, we will be approving that budget tonight as part of our consent agenda.
And it happens to be Earth Day. So, it's perfect.
Yes. And with that, we can go to our first presentation.
Thank you. So, I'll go ahead and just start off very quickly. And I guess if our teammates can join us, that'd be great. If you're all right, Jane and Mike and Jeff and Melissa. So, as our group comes up here, so just, Bor, as a reminder that looking at this year is a transition year for us from kind of our, what was our previous mission and vision work? And then now we've identified our, kind of our pillars and looking at that. So, we'll see that tonight. You'll see a little bit of a blend of both those. But sustainability here, and as you may recall, the sustainability and global citizenship is that kind of refresh pillar that we'll be seeing for next year and things. But I'll go ahead and hand it over to Julia. She, thank you, Julia.
Thank you. And thank you all for your kind words. I'm so happy tonight because everybody here is a real partner and a teammate. And I'm so grateful to you and to the students in the back. It's been so fun working with you, having you as part of our Sustainability and our Schools Committee. And you are making all of us better. So, thank you so much. Tonight's presentation begins with, well, it's a conversation. So, I do want to make sure everybody has a chance to introduce themselves, too, so you know who's around our table. So, Melissa, do you want to start?
Sure. Hi, I'm Melissa Brady. It's a pleasure to be here again and to continue in this role. I am an instructional coach at the middle school and throughout the district, do a lot of sustainability coordination work. Advisor to the middle school green team and Meadow Pond's green team as well.
I'm Jim Panzer, and I teach physics here at the high school for 20 something years and also earth science for the last three years. And I'm also the district Sustainability Curriculum Integration Advisor or leader for grades six through 12. And I'm also a parent in the district of my little girl who had a presentation in the thing earlier.
She did very well, yes.
Hi, Jane Emmick, fourth grade teacher over at Increase Miller. I'm the Elementary Sustainability Integration Leader, and I'm also an advisor for the green team over at Increase Miller.
I'm Mike Floyd, Director of Facilities. I participate in the Sustainability Team, work with our architects, engineers, taking these efforts and help facilitate the process.
Thanks so much. It really is a partnership. I get to work really closely with Lisa and the Board Sustainability Committee, but also thank you in advance and for everything you've already done. The Facilities Department has partnered a lot with us. And Noni can, well, you'll hear in the video, can attest to the fact that all of the data that demonstrates all of our effectiveness has to come from somewhere. And so, thank you guys so much for all your help with that. So, we'll just begin, I know it's a little small for you to see, but the commitment that is highlighted there is something from our website and really talks about equipping learners with the knowledge, skills and motivation to address complex environmental challenges. And one example of how we do that is a school in the district has a garden which is tended by various people, including our very own Melissa there in the right-hand side. I believe I took that beautiful picture at KES one day when you were doing a salad dressing and mulsification science experiment.
That is right. I do not tend that garden, just to be fair. Margie Corcella does. But I, we were using the greens that she had grown.
Wonderful. And this team has also been instrumental in helping us implement year one of our three-year sustainability plan, which we introduced to you last year. And I could tell you a few of the highlights there, but really it was a team effort. Our whole Sustainability Committee team participated. And so, you'll see the blue represents data and transparency. The orange is leadership, organization and communication. And the darker orange is educational programs. So, just some samples of the things that we've accomplished this year. We launched a student survey to track sustainability awareness in the elementary schools. We piloted Start and Eco School platforms to begin a structured data collection. You'll hear more about that in a minute. We've developed a student ambassador model in the middle school and the high school. We saw growth in teacher-led sustainability efforts across disciplines. We planned tonight's beautiful Sustainability Showcase. We mapped community-based partnerships with an environmental surrounding survey. And we administered a survey that collected evidence of integration of sustainability in various departments like science, economics and design. Heard about marketing, also GenderPall has been a tremendous partner. And we've used Community Reads to ground sustainability theme school-wide. Jim is another example of that. And we've compiled a district-wide sustainability snapshot from existing work that we are going to use as a foundation to our curriculum mapping efforts which are to come. So, this is some of, a little bit of a snapshot of year one. And then, the next page starts with "By the Numbers" graphic. And you'll remember, these are last year's numbers. So, I'm very excited to say that they're not, that they're only improved from there. And we have a tremendous showing as far as green teams, student involvement, awards, et cetera. And below that are some of our green teams. I know all of our, the people that are here with me tonight have been involved in green teams. And you might remember the podcasting station from last year's Sustainability Showcase, right there, the picture with Quan. So, Rich, if you're, if you can hear me, can you play just an audio sample of that, of a podcast from our KES Green Team? Please, and thank you. Give me a little louder, please.
Hi, we're the KES Green Team.
Hello, I'm Mina.
And I'm Alexandra. And today on episode four, we are the Transportation and Fossil Field Department of the KES Green Team.
Don't worry, we won't bore you.
To just at least.
Anyways, today we are going to be talking about greenhouse gases and how transportation affects them and how we as humans affect them too. Anyway, let's get to the action.
It continues, it's very sweet. Thank you, Rich, if you don't mind taking us back to our presentation. And I'll ask Jane, if you can, tell us a little bit about Waste-Free Wednesdays, which is a great initiative that you started at Increase.
Sure. So, the green team, you know, we, when we meet, we talk about a lot of different things that we want to do. And they have so many ideas and so little time. But one of the things that we continue to talk about is reducing waste. So, we talked, and we kind of, I have a motto, like, we learn and then we plan and then we act. So, we studied the different forms of waste that happen in our school. And one of the biggest problems is our cafeteria, you know, where a lot of waste is created. So, we started a campaign and we decided we wanted to challenge every student in our building to have a Waste-Free Wednesday on a particular Wednesday in March. And so, we created these forums and students went home. They talked to their parents. They planned out what they wanted to eat the next, that Wednesday for snack and for lunch and how they were going to package it and what they needed to bring home as their responsibility to reuse. So, we, students created videos and it was on our morning announcements. There was signage over the building. And we had a huge turnout for that. And so, we started doing it every Wednesday. And by June this year, we're hoping to do it every day. But it was very exciting. And we did reduce the waste, according to our custodian, who's been tracking our garbage on Wednesdays. And then teachers started tracking their garbage in their classrooms and their waste in their, you know, through snack that happens in the classroom. So, it was really exciting. And students got little eagle-eye stickers, you know, for their participation. And yeah, so it was really exciting and fun.
Thank you. And I know Lisa and Mike will talk later about more to do with Waste-Free Wednesdays. But thank you for that. Jim, I mentioned the Community Reads, but we kind of skimmed right over. Do you want to talk a little bit about those?
Well, so, yeah, last summer, there was two books chosen for the Community Reads that were specifically targeting, you know, with themes of sustainability. And there was two chosen at the high school level because at the high school level, you have freshmen and sophomores. It might be a different reading level than juniors and seniors. But both were, both were heavily sustainability-themed. And we kicked them off with a tree planting ceremony in front of the high school where people came and, you know, we, it was a six-foot tree we got donated from Goss's Nursery. And they put it in. It was like a hopeful kind of celebration, you know, something like that. Because when you plant a tree, you're like, you're not, you are not really doing it for yourself, it's for the future generations. And like, you know, science classes took part of it for carbon sequestration. And the English department were heavily involved in it because of the nature of the Community Reads or, you know, it was really spearheaded by them. But yeah, marketing got involved. So, in terms of, in terms of like, that was just a kickoff of the event. But in terms of like, a multi-faceted way of getting more curriculum, you know, more disciplines in with sustainability, as you saw tonight, like, there's so much there. Sustainability is such a great lever to pull to get student engagement in general because these students are passionate about it. And so, when you tap into their passion and get them to really learn something that has, you know, because they want to learn about it, then, you know, you're really speaking the language they need to hear.
Thank you, Jim. And speaking of student passion, I know, Melissa, you wanted to talk a little bit about the Meadow Project at the middle school.
Oh, I'd love to. I think many of you stopped by that booth today. Thank you. So, we have a green team at the middle school. We're, and as well, we've also been doing some curriculum work around healthy habitats and ecosystems in sixth grade. And so, it's really nice to be able to see this come together. So, two of the students that are eighth graders now, they've been on the middle school green team and started at the elementary school. So, that's one of the wonderful things about having a green team at every level is the kids continue to follow through with the things that they care about and get more mature and do bigger things. So, these two students really wanted to take action. Our green team was responsible for, thank you to Lisa, switching out the plastic cups for compostable paper cups. And so, they really liked the idea of seeing change. And so, what they want to do is turn some of our turf lawn, which doesn't have a lot of environmental benefits, into a meadow that would provide a biodiverse habitat and attract pollinators and birds to the middle school campus. So, they've been working on that plan for a while, looking for the proper location and getting approval from the stakeholders that they need to, you know, speak with. And so, our principal is behind it. And Mike has been very supportive with all of our questions. And so, tonight was their night to kind of launch their project and ask for volunteers. And they're selling plant plugs so that they can have the materials that they need. And we have parent volunteers helping and students. And it's really, it's really exciting. Where, I think what's going to be great is you're going to walk in the middle school and at our new entrance that they're constructing, it'll be right in front of you and it's glass. And so, you'll see into this lovely meadow. And we can do educational signage on the glass. And I'm thinking it would be a great place for kids to collect data for math or science, or there could be, you know, a curiosity station, a notice and wondering station. And I think that the location right in the hallway will really be engaging for the students in the school and will spark good conversations and maybe some lessons beyond, so.
It's really wonderful stuff. And those are all of the green, like, some examples of green team efforts. But then we also have assured experiences for all that we're excited about. And Jane can talk a little bit more about the Earth Chat slides that we started this year. Jane, do you mind?
Sure. So, there was, I had a, okay, how do I start? Okay. There was a real deliberate effort to bring everyone into the initiative for sustainability. So, we already have some themes that are across the different elementary schools for like, social-emotional learning, you know, themes like friendship and kindness and responsibility. So, it seemed to just make sense to sort of tie in with some of the pre-existing themes. So, I created these slides that are now integrated with the morning meeting announcements. So, and they were also shared with the other elementary schools. So, every student, when they have their morning meeting and listen to the morning announcements and they hear about, you know, the day, the schedule of the day and all those other kinds of things, they also have a sustainability integration connection. And so, part of that is some terms might be presented for students, like the term of sustainability, even to kindergartners and first graders. You know, terms like climate and equity and things like that are introduced and defined and examples are given. And then there's a suggested Earth Chat for teachers to follow up with. After the morning announcement, they will have their morning meeting and they will integrate by having an Earth Chat about the topic that was presented in the morning. So, I think that's a great way to bring everyone into the idea and kind of start from our youngest students so that it's not just something they hear, you know, a few times a year or in April. You know, it becomes part of their everyday life in the classroom.
Nice job of integrating it very authentically. And so, another example of integration is the next video. Rich, if you don't mind playing that. This is a sustainability, a sustainable community based on the characteristics of urban, suburban and rural communities that the children in second grade Meadow Pond learned about in social sciences.
Hello, everyone. Welcome to a rural community known as Animal Fields.
Rich, can you raise the volume a little bit?
My names are Joshua, Amber, Ava and Velmore. We are so excited to show you why Animal Fields is the best place to live, work and play.
First, let's talk about the wonderful places to live. In our community, you can find cozy houses with barns for the animals.
Each home is surrounded by beautiful trees, large fields, gardens and crops. Now, let's take a look at where you can work. Animal Fields has lots of great jobs. You could work on the farm, in a school, out of farmer's market or at a town store.
And guess what? Maybe people in our community can even walk or bike to work. That's great for staying healthy and keeping our air clean. However, you would need a car if you needed to travel outside of town.
When it's time to have fun, there's no better place than Animal Fields. We have awesome places to play like our playgrounds, open fields and backyards.
One of the coolest things about Animal Fields is how we take care of our planet. We have wind turbines, fields of crops and recycling, and a recycling program and compost.
We all work together to keep our community green and clean. It's our way of helping our planet stay healthy.
So, if you're looking for a place that's perfect for living, working and playing, you care about taking care of the earth, then Animal Fields is the place for you.
Come join us in Animal Fields. We can't wait to welcome you.
Thank you for watching our infomercial about our wonderful community.
We hope to see you soon in Animal Fields.
Super proud of them. Thank you. Some more assured experiences that we have come in the form of our Amplify Science Program, which you've heard a lot about, in grades K to five. The topics include how humans change the environment to meet their needs, biomimicry, building a model using nature to help solve a human problem, erosion, changing landforms, strategies to support ecosystem balance, rock formations, the role of ecologists in protecting the earth's ecosystems. So, there's some really rich science learning happening for all, K to five. And then, our library media specialists have done a really intentional and excellent job of integrating stream, science, technology, research, engineering, art and math, because a new letter every time, every year, I feel like. But into creating stream and sustainability. See some really cool examples in these pictures. Building wind turbines, working on water filters, building a colony on Mars with recycled materials. So, there's a lot of really awesome opportunities there. And then, you see some examples of our secondary work in grades six, seven and eight. And I can have Jim lend a hand on that. Right after, Rich, may you play the next video, please. Grade eight employs a science and engineering practice of asking questions and defining problems to examine global climate change.
I'm doing this unit, I learned kind of exactly how our greenhouse gases like contribute to global warming and kind of like what they do and how they get into our atmospheres. And like, just like where they come from and kind of how we contribute to that. What we focused on is like, you know, the greater the carbon emissions, the, you know, CO2 with its heat-trapping property, infrared radiation radiates from the earth, terrestrial radiation. It was a lot of kind of like the science foundation to them when you're trying to make a solution. You have what science, knowledge and then evidence that people are asking you, like, okay, why would that even work? You know, you have what is necessary to create a thoughtful solution. I think that this unit was really important because like it taught us, like, that probably what it actually do.
It's hard to hear, I'm sorry. Rich, I don't know if you can get it louder at all.
Everyone should go through a unit like this if they haven't already because it teaches you like the reality and what's actually happening.
Oh, that would be.
And then, like, you as an individual can then think of like, okay, what can I do or what ideas do I have that can fix this problem? And if everyone thinks like that, then a solution is bound to like, you know.
So, I know you can't really hear, but what I can attest to, because I was speaking with two of them at the showcase a few moments ago. They are extremely passionate about the topic and excited to share what they know about it. Anything that you wanted to add about?
Actually, I'll defer to Melissa. She's like boots-on-the-ground resident expert of all things middle school, for sure.
Thank you.
So, that was an environmental, that is an earth science class. And the students are learning about, as they said, the whole carbon cycle process there. And as you know, the science standards do include sustainability standards. And so, that is in Zach Miller's class. And they're doing a wonderful job doing, they look at a phenomenon, they unpack it. They learn to, you know, really understand what's happening in the situation and then create like a claim and evidence statement. The sixth grade, I can talk a little bit about those sixth grade projects that you see. So, because this is a nice interdisciplinary example. This is from last year. Our sixth grade, one of our sixth grade math teachers had the students using their geometry skills to design a backyard. So, their design brief was to work for a couple who wanted a backyard, dream backyard. And so, they had a budget and they had to use all their geometry skills and their math skills for calculation to plot out this backyard. And I guess I've been making a lot of noise about sustainability. So, she said, can we integrate sustainability? And we decided that the yard would be a healthy habitat. And so, the students were then tasked to create a backyard that would incorporate pollinators and birds and trees that would support a biodiverse ecosystem. So, that, we did that last year. And this year, the ELA teacher that works on that team has decided to do her informational writing unit, research and writing unit, because they share students. And so, the students are going to research the creatures that live in that healthy habitat. So, they'll either research birds or insects or reptiles and amphibians or mammals. And then, we think that they're going to be really inspired to create a very beautiful backyard habitat because they care about the creatures. So, they're doing their nonfiction research and writing. And they're learning all about the whole, it just grew and expanded to so many different concepts, from science to math to writing, to reading, using reputable sources, the whole gamut. And so, we're pretty excited about that one. So, that's in sixth grade.
Thank you. Wonderful. And I got a little bit ahead of myself with the high school, so thank you, Jim. What we're, you see next is a snapshot of our Start dashboard. And that is the, where, how we're beginning to collect like structured data regarding all of our accomplishments thus far. We're the first school in, a public school in New York State to be using this. There was a bit of a learning curve. And again, shout out to GenderPall, the marketing, and Noni Whelan. Thank you for taking this project on and trying something that's like new and different, yet something we can celebrate and really hang our hat on. So, thank you. It's an educational platform. It measures, and you'll hear this in the video in just a moment, educational programs, organization. educational programs, organizational culture and physical place. And you're able to connect blue ribbon dimensions as well as the UN sustainability goals to each of those accomplishments and all which would position us really nicely for a Green Ribbon Award, which is another one of our goals. So I will let the video do the talking now. So Rich, if you don't mind playing the next video.
Start Dashboard is a way for our school to see how sustainable we are. There's three different topics. So there's like education, sort of like the grounds, like physical, and then like organizational. So there can be stuff with like teaching sustainability to groundwork and landscaping and cafeteria food waste. We have Meatless Mondays in our cafeterias. We have like sustainable silverware and composting. We also have Sustainability Club and we just donated money to UNICEF, CCC. So we're offsetting carbon emissions in China. I think John Jay does a lot. I'm part of the district sustainability committee, so I see a lot of the behind the scenes. So I know there's a lot of work that has been done and then there's also a lot of work to do. So I'm proud of what John Jay has done.
Thank you. And we're very proud to have you on our committee too. Thank you. And while we're thanking people, again, thank you to Lisa and Mike, who were real partners in our acquisition of the data that we gathered in order to give ourselves credit for all the great work that we have done thus far. And then we'll just wrap with a couple more examples at the high school level with economics and social studies students. We're developing an even deeper relationship with Grace Farms, which we're excited about as well. And so I just want to give my team any chance to say anything you haven't been able to say yet before I turn it over to Lisa.
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, if it wasn't already painfully obvious by the number of students that presented in the thing that we had prior to this. It's also a testament to teachers because nowadays, teachers come to me more often with, with like, hey, have you heard about this resource about climate change? I'm like, actually that one I haven't. Tell me more. And like that has started to happen more organically where teachers are taking up the sustainability charge, like using, they understand how important it is for our students and for the future of the world and all that. And really just as a, as an educational tool. And then it's also nice to see that a lot of teachers are wrapping in equity, issues of equity with sustainability because they are intricately connected. And, you know, if a student is not, you know, quite there on like the going green, but is quite there on issues of equity, there's something for everybody there. So it's coming up much more often. It's more, it's not like, oh, and we have to do sustainability? No, it's like, no, of course, of course we do sustainability and we have to do the other things. You know, like not equity, of course, and we do equity and, you know, and we have to do our regular curriculum, whatever it is, you know, we have to do the quadratic equation and sustainability, you know, it's like, of course. So I just want, yeah, I just wanted to mention that. Like there's a lot of teachers behind the scenes doing a lot of work for the benefit of our students and it's really showed tonight. So many students within science research that had sustainability focus for years. And they're, they had our, they used our sustainability event as like a practice session for when they really go in front of judges that are gonna judge them for, you know, grade them. So it's just really great to see. It's really proud to work here.
All those teachers are also on our sustainability committee. So it was really great.
Yes, there are, yeah, like Ginger Pile. If I go down a list of names, I'll forget ones. I'll put that. But yeah, there are some on our sustainability committee. But there's also just some that are just doing the work and not, not looking for credit for it. They're just like, yeah, no, I'm just doing this work. And that's just how it is, how it's supposed to be. And like, so shout out to those teachers that want to remain nameless.
That's right. There you go. Thank you very much. Lisa?
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. And we are, Mike and I are pleased to present about our district's sustainability initiatives in our buildings, our grounds and transportation, as well as our food service program. Both those that are already underway, as well as those that are planned for this school year, the 2425 school year. These initiatives reflect our commitment to environmental responsibility, operational efficiencies, as well as enriching student learning. So I'm going to turn it over to Mike, who's going to speak about our buildings, grounds and facilities.
Okay, first and foremost, Katona Lewisboro is investing in significant infrastructure improvements. They're directly aimed at reducing our environmental footprint. This is a pivotal role. Project's currently underway. And we have one big one that everybody, I think, is keeping a close eye on. That's the, I don't know if that's me.
I think he wants to pull a little closer to you. Yeah, just pull it closer to yourself.
Is that what the problem is?
Yeah.
I don't know much about audio.
They usually don't give me one of these on, so I'm pretty surprised.
I think I got a hot mic. Yeah. Sorry about that.
No worries.
Okay, so the geothermal project at Katona Elementary School. Happy to report things are moving along. And the most important thing to know about this is this system, geothermal well system, will not only decrease the reliance of fossil fuels for the heating system at Katona, but it'll introduce air conditioning for the entire building. This will enhance the student comfort and sustainability simultaneously. And the occupant experience is really important in buildings. So also in a pursuit of strategic energy management, we're exploring an energy performance contract. We always say EPC, so just to explain. This one specifically would be designed to equip every school roof with solar panels, photovoltaic solar panels. This is a very ambitious initiative and it's aimed to build a system with a capacity upwards around 2,300 kilowatts, which annually could generate 2.3 to 3 million KWH. This is a move that promises substantially, substantial energy cost reductions throughout the district. And to put that in perspective, our average was about 4.3 million KWH. So you're looking at potential, you know, infusion of 50% or so of our own sustainable electricity. Another portion here is waste management, which you touched on, which, what was it? What Wednesday?
Waste free.
Waste free Wednesday. That's great because, you know, our custodians do monitor the composting and to have George give a little compliment, that's great. Waste management remains a cornerstone of our sustainability efforts. Thank you, Jane. Across all cafeterias, we've implemented comprehensive recycling and composting practices. We've transitioned to compostable trays, utensils. And we ensure that our waste is managed in an environmentally responsible manner, aligning with circular economy principles.
Mike, is there anything else you want to add about buildings and grounds? I think that we're just focusing on this year. I mean, there's so much work you will see in the next, the subsequent pages. What has been done over the last 20 or so years, as well as what was going forward? If you, but we just were, we just were touching on the work of this school year, so.
Yeah, internal workings, there's always going to be software driven energy savings, which Dr. Blanch is helping me out with ideas there. And working with our teachers, I just think of Dr. Linda Burke and her tenure. And what she offered up was energy for sustainability. I see this, this same thing happening now. So it's nice to see it all explained by many teachers. And kind of feels like, like Jim was expressing, things are moving along pretty well.
Just so I'll also touch on, you know, as part of our district initiatives, we believe in hands-on learning. That is why we're constructing a greenhouse, which is, I believe is supposed to begin over break. Yes? Yes. Constructing a greenhouse adjacent to the middle school, family consumer science classrooms. Here, students will germinate and cultivate, harvest and prepare their very own food they grow there, gaining firsthand experience in agriculture, nutrition, as well as resource conservation, fostering a deeper understanding of sustainability among our students. Further, we continue to invest in sustainable transportation office options. As we have already spoke about, we are proud that we will be adding six electric buses, the electric micro buses to our fleet, one which we ordered last school year, which is still, you're still waiting for arrival. And then five, four buses that were just recently approved that will be ordered once we know the timeline for the installation of our chargers. So speaking of those chargers, we are installing eight, eight chargers, EV chargers at the high school, as well as eight EV chargers at the middle school. They will be commuter car chargers. That means that our staff, our students, as well as members of our community, at, you know, at their own cost, can use the chargers to charge their electric vehicles. Currently, since our electrical capacity needs to be, we need to improve or, you know, upgrade it. We will be using the chargers at the high school. We're going to convert them to charge the six micro buses. That's actually been part of the reason we've delayed on purchasing the buses is simply we do not have the electrical capacity. And as I'm sure everyone knows, that's a part of our requests that we have for our next school year's budget is to use excess funds in the current school year to begin to work, you know, to begin to do that work as far as upgrading our electrical capacity as we continue to transition to electric school fleet, as well as our O and M fleet as well. So just overall. And also, it's interesting, I'm talking about the composting. I know some of my colleagues regionally, within our region, are just getting interested in composting. And, you know, and they were asking questions, sent throughout a survey. And I sent a note to one of my colleagues and I said, well, you should reach out to my colleague, Mike Lavoy, because we've had composting here for quite a number of years. And they, so Mike, you know, has spoken with them as far as explaining how we have that incorporated in our, in our waste management program here. So, oh, yes, thank you. So again, you can see here this timeline, I believe Rory actually developed, that, you know, going back to the start in 2005, when K L S D established their principles. And in the subsequent year, when the Wellness Committee actually created the sub, the Subcommittee for Sustainability and the goals that had been set over the years and reached those goals over the years. Our most recent goal set by the Board of Education is to reach, is to see 85% reduction in our greenhouse gas by 2040. And our data shows that if we don't hit those numbers like this school year, we will be hitting them in very, you know, in the short term, prior to 2040. So we're continuing to drill down in that data just to, because we want to ensure it's accurate as possible. But, you know, over the years, we've, 2021, switching over to LED lights, EPC, first EPC about 12 years ago. But it's just been, you know, water filling stations, something that was installed in 2014, where many districts still today don't have these water filler stations. So it is, you know, the work that's been done here has truly been just really well ahead of its time. And so, and then on the following pages, then you'll see our, you know, what we're looking for going forward and our goals for going forward. Again, the 85% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions by 2040, which we're very close to ending, as well as, you know, reducing our boilers as they reach end of life, because we don't want to create more waste. But as they reach end of life, replacing them with more sustainable options. And, you know, of course, our first pilot with the geothermal, the ground source heat pump programs at KES.
Yeah. It's important to note too, that in advance of eliminating, eliminating, I'm sorry, I'm tripping over my tongue, eliminating the boilers at the end of their useful life is we're, we're cutting down on their consumption of fuels through the use of air source heat pumps. And that's gradually happening in all of the schools. So I'm sorry.
No, that's, thank you for adding that. That's interesting because actually one of the presentations was about. I don't know if they're here. Tonight's one of our students had.
At the end of their, their life, we want to render them useless, you know, in every way we can. And I think we're, we're gonna get there, so.
So in conclusion, these initiatives, you know, epitomize Katona Lewisboro School District's dedication to sustainability across all of our operational facets. And as Melissa mentioned, I mean, it's like, it goes for, you know, our cups that we purchased. And, you know, there's all these pieces, little pieces that, you know, we didn't mention here today. And Meatless Monday, which, you know, Austin and Luke, you know, approached me, I think about a year and a half ago, we started talking about that and coming. They were, they attended our food service and wellness meetings and presented to us and everything. So there's all this work in all the different operational departments that we work on that not only promises environmental benefits, also cost-saving benefits that, as well as providing valuable learning experiences for our students, preparing them to be conscientious global citizens. So, thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. That was pretty awesome. So one of the things, again, as I was going through, you're thinking, it's been 20 years now, since 2005 here, when the district established those sustainability principles. And I can only imagine how the folks at that point in time, if we could kind of teleport and parent this right now, would be pretty much in awe with, I think, the short presentation we heard today and saw earlier this evening from our students and things. So I think that, I think maybe Jim spoke a little bit, I think everybody did, that the idea of sustainability is, it's a way of being. It's not like, oh, I'm gonna do this. This is kind of, no, it's, it's really very much a way of being. And if you had a chance to go out beforehand and see from our students, it is something that now is in the way of our thoughts and our thinking of how we approach our learning, how we approach our thinking, how we approach, how we have a responsibility to each other and to our planet. And that certainly started 20 years ago very clearly with that standpoint and it continues to this day forward. And so it was, it really hit me tonight when I actually did really well on the compost puzzle. I don't know if I made it, but I did pretty, I didn't get a lot of, you know, but I didn't get any wrong. I actually have one kind of wrong, but it was a mistake on my part. But to have, and then to have the conversation with the kids tonight, you got a sense it was coming from passion. It wasn't coming from I must do, I have to, this kind of thing. It was, it was from passion. With passion, who knows what's gonna happen to us next? So again, commend all of our teachers and our family here tonight as well, as those who are in our classrooms are making a living piece. We saw it tonight from the littlest children to our oldest kids. And so just a sampling of those students involved in that. So we should, and I am certainly proud of our community. So very well. Thank you, everyone. Thanks to the students again earlier. So thank you. All right. Thanks, guys. Let you step away there. So, yeah. Thank you. Thanks, Andrea. Thanks, Lisa. Next one.
Thank you. Have a good night. So this takes us to 8.02, which is a conversation about the updated district special education plan, which we're hoping to present in a future meeting for approval by the Board of Education.
So we'll have that in the next couple of weeks. So tonight, and Alex, if you want to jump in there, just let me know if I missed anything. But basically, much more streamlined than what it was before. And I think updated to identify our key new programs, really just in the last few years that are in there. Those are the two pieces that really resonate.
Those are the major shifts, you know, so there's a lot that's just regulatory that has to be included in a plan. And we were able to really look at what were the key components? How could we format it in a way where it was easy to access, streamlined and easy to update? And I think that that's really, like you said, the two more significant changes. But we anticipate having that on the eighth.
Great. Thanks, Alex. Yep. Should have that on the eighth and seventh. Thanks, everybody. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you. Okay, so we look forward to seeing that. This takes us to item 9.01, which is an opportunity for public forum. And I know we have one person who has signed up to speak and, you know, oh, okay. We've signed in though. So there's no one else signed up. So with that, I will close public forum. And that brings us to the consent agenda. And as I've said in a few meetings so far, there are, over the course of the spring, we do see retirements that are part of the consent agenda. And we're not acknowledging each retirement individually. We have a wonderful board meeting in June where we do acknowledge. But just, you know, we're very fortunate to have a lot of longstanding professionals in the district. And we wish all of them the best in their retirement. Look forward to celebrating them in June. And with that, would someone like to move the consent agenda? Moved by Rory, seconded by Bill. All those in favor? Six, zero. And I would like to recognize a gift. So this is a resolution to accept a gift from Joseph and Carrie Sindalar. I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. This is a monetary donation of $1,000 for the Class of 1977 Scholarship. So we've been seeing these at the last few board meetings. So thank you for that very generous gift. I'd like to move the resolution. Someone could second it? Seconded by Marjorie. All those in favor? Six, zero. So thank you very much to Joseph and Carrie Sindalar for their donation. And now we have an opportunity for any. And now we have an opportunity for any board dialogue or discussion. If anyone has anything.
I say this every time I see this 1977 thing come up. I think it's awesome that these guys are contributing to John Jay High School. And I think that there was a class, now it's just Joseph and Carrie who are contributing $1,000. It's just such a generous gift and I just think it's great that community members who already graduated in 1977 from John Jay are still contributing to the district. I think it's awesome. So thank you.
Excellent. And I did want to wish our students good luck. And Marjorie mentioned it before, but we did approve a trip for some students who are competing nationally with DECA. It's really exciting. It's a new initiative this year and we're doing really well, so congratulations to them and best of luck to them, so.
Julia, I think before our next board meeting, our seniors head off to their internships and the classes will be a little quieter. Is that right? Am I right about that?
I think we have one more meeting.
One more.
And then, yeah.
Okay, I just want to wish them well. I mean, that's such a milestone in young people's lives to head off on their internships.
Yes.
It's so exciting, but I'll hold my thought.
Great. Excellent. Great. So that takes us to item 17.01, which is future meetings. So we have tomorrow, a policy committee meeting tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM in the district office. On Thursday, May 1st, we have an audit committee meeting in the district office at 7:00 PM. And then Friday morning, the next Friday, so that same Friday, we have an 8:15 AM sustainability committee meeting at the district office on Friday, May 2nd. Our next Board of Education meeting is Thursday, May 8th, here in the library. And then in advance of the upcoming board and, board vote and election of board members, Kim is very gracious and hosts a special voter registration day. So Saturday, May 10th, the district office will be open for anyone who wants to register and can vote in that, in our upcoming election and budget vote. So that's Saturday, May 10th, here in the district office from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And then on Wednesday, May 14th, the finance committee will meet in the district office at 7:00 PM. And then on May 20th, we will have our polls opening at 6:00 AM. They'll be open until 9:00 PM for the annual budget vote and election. And those will be at the elementary schools, the three elementary schools, Katona, Crease Miller and Meadow Pond. So check in about where you should go to vote if you aren't certain with previous Lewisboro residents where to go vote. And then Thursday, May 22nd, we have our Board of Education meeting here in the library at 7:30, followed by the next day, a policy committee meeting on Friday, May 30th. And John, can you remind me when the, where the candidate night from the PTOs is, what night that is?
It's May 5th.
Is that correct? Okay. So, and May 5th, it's.
It's Monday.
It's a Monday. Oh, all right, okay. So stay tuned and watch your PTO newsletters, your e-newsletters from the PTOs. Generally, Parent Council does host a candidate night for the three candidates who are running. So they may be doing something different this year, but it's an opportunity to get to hear from your candidates. And I will turn it over to you, Ray.
I think that was it again. I just, I know you've gone through the sustainability fair stuff. That was, that was really wonderful. That was really great. I was really, just to see the little ones, the kids in the middle school, to the high school, the connectivity there. And again, coming from themselves and their passion about this question, why were you interested in this? And it's coming from them. It's not like, oh, because I had to. So it's always, it's a love to see kids when they're fired up like that, so thank you.
Great. Excellent. And we only have you for a few more meetings, so. And with that, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn? Motion by Bill, seconded by Barbara. All those in favor? Six, zero. Great, thank you.